So I think that according to my clock it is 6:30. So welcome, everybody. We can get started with the Norton School Committee meeting for Thursday, February 26, 2021. So I think that we are all in attendance. So hope everybody is doing well. How about we're gonna sort of, we have a little bit of a kind of simple agenda tonight. So we are going to turn it over very quickly to Zoe and Malia, who are going to offer us an update, our students, who will give us some insight how things are going. So Zoe, Malia, welcome.
Hi, thank you. Um, we're actually gonna do something kind of different. We're just kind of, kind of, a big thing at the school right now is a lot of kids are freaking out about, are we going back to school full time? I don't want to make this like a big controversial topic because I mean, it is kind of controversial. But a lot of kids are like, why am I going to give my opinion when it's a lot of people in charge who don't really put students' opinions to make the decision? So we were like, alright, so what are your opinions? Let's just look, make them heard. So we have, not from the little kids, they didn't have any input, but we kind of had a small group just to see what are kids thinking? What, what do we think about this?
We do actually have some input from the YL for what they think about it.
Yeah, just not the JCS or the LGN, but yeah, I'll let Malia start with that.
Okay, so for starters, we have for the LGN and the JCS, both of them are celebrating Read Across America Week. And so we asked, we asked all the principals, we said, no pressure, but if you have any input, we'd love to hear it about what kids think about going back to school. So he actually said that since they're so short of substitutes, he was subbing for some classes. So he got to ask both Mrs. Bruno's fifth grade and Mrs. Winter's fifth grade students. So he said, when asking them about coming back to school in one class, they unanimously voted yes, unbelievably enthusiastically for almost all the students in both classes. I told them it may take some time, but I appreciated their voting. In the other class, there were two students who were very thoughtful and said they were excited, but just a little bit worried. And when asking why they wanted to be back, they explained everything. They said they just wanted to be back and they could get more teacher support when they needed. They talked about how great it would be to see their other friends in the other cohort. They talked about how they wouldn't have to deal with technology glitches at home anymore and that they appreciate their teachers supporting them and emailing them or getting them when they are next in class, but being fully in person would be so much better for their learning. They also discussed how they felt like they were doing so much more on their own, on those at-home learning days, and now they would be just in-school days. He said that they would be super excited if this happens. The two students who said they were excited but a little hesitant said that they were worried about whether everyone could keep safe with so many more students here every day. They had questions about the classroom setup, cafeteria, recess, switching classes, use of lockers, buses, and more. They gave me questions I didn't even think of yet. They are so awesome. And I explained to them that these are the exact things we are going to figure out prior to having everyone back. So that's pretty interesting to see what the little kids think because I know that I hear a lot, like Zoe said, from the high school kids, a lot of strong opinions, but it's good to hear from the little kids. So Zoe's gonna cover the high school.
Um, yeah, from the high school, one of my teachers actually was really helpful and she did a survey just to her classes because we didn't want to do a big school-wide thing because we don't know if this is happening. We don't, we're not sure. So we just wanted to get a small group of kids. So about 37 kids responded. So we have a little bit. Um, overall, 75% of those kids said no, they don't want to go back to school full-time. 16% said maybe and 8% said, yeah, we want to go. And those yas were, I'm excited, I want to see my friends. And they were also from the seniors who say, I want a normal end to my senior year with the whole grade as a whole seeing each other because they haven't seen the other cohort in the past year. So they're like, we want to go back, but those 75%, they were pretty opinionated. They were nervous that it could get worse. They're scared that we're gonna go back too early and then it eventually affects what happens next year. Um, they say that it's hard to follow the distance rules as it is. Kids don't follow it. They don't want to follow it. So it's a little difficult with just half of the whole school. Um, they're afraid of getting their parents or themselves sick because it is still a big risk. Uh, they, they're, they're already used to the complicated hybrid schedule. They like the constant. They don't want to change it. Um, so why not just stick it out for the rest of the year? Um, then they also said that for an educational purpose, it might be better to go back because they can see their teachers, it's easier to ask questions, it's like it usually is for school. They won't have to worry about technical difficulties or anything like that. But they know that for safety reasons, it might just be better to stick it out. Um, but yeah, mainly kids feel like, why am I giving my opinion? The people in charge don't really care. So that's why we thought it just might be a good idea. Just so you can see before stuff starts happening, before decisions are made, this is what the kids are feeling and just to get a little kid input. But Malia, do you have anything to add for the high school or anything?
Um, not really. I think you pretty much covered what we wanted to do, which was basically just kind of get like random opinions from, you know, groups of kids and see kind of what the general consensus is, like what people are thinking. It sounds like it's pretty all over the place, which is to be expected. But I thought it was interesting to hear how different everyone's thoughts are on this. But yeah, I think you pretty much covered it all.
Yeah, definitely surprising to see that 75% of those kids said, no, I'm not going back to school. But yeah, I think that sums it up.
So Zoe, Malia, thank you so much. I think actually what you did was give sort of a nice representation of what is happening, I think, just sort of across kind of the, at least sort of our experience, that there isn't a one-size-fits-all and that we're even seeing amongst adults that everybody has a particular opinion, idea, thought. Um, so I think a couple of things I just want to clarify and it really sort of makes me feel bad. Zoe, I know you mentioned it, that students feel like their voices aren't heard. That is never what we want students to sort of feel, right? Um, we absolutely know that sometimes decisions are made that aren't necessarily decisions that students agree with. We absolutely recognize that. But I think I can speak on behalf of at least Dr. Bayetta in regards to, you know, the work and the tireless effort to get groups of students together who are representative, of course, we don't have the opportunities to sit with every single student, but to have groups of students, both of you even as sort of representatives of your class body, of your student body, to kind of share ideas and thoughts. And I think it does happen certainly in each building somewhat differently. But I do think that we have put in a lot of effort to have students' voices heard. And I don't know, Joe, if you wanted to kind of mention that. I know that you have had conversations with students in sort of smaller groups and really sort of listening to their voices. I absolutely know that there will always be somebody who leaves a conversation not happy because sometimes decisions are made that don't necessarily support kind of what they were hoping. But it doesn't mean that they weren't heard or that their sort of ideas or thoughts or suggestions weren't sort of taken into consideration. So Joe, I don't know if you have anything that you can sort of add to that.
Yeah, I think the, um, not to defend it because I always want to hear from students, even if I don't like what they have to say, it's just like the staff. I think it's important for us to hear things that, that we don't agree with because it leads to other potential solutions to issues. But I do think that one of the things I need to follow up is with the administration at the high school that they need to find a way to communicate to the rest of the student body. Because I do know that they're having meetings with student leaders on a regular basis. And I guess the question then is how do you get that information out to the students? I don't know if they, I don't think they've surveyed, but I know, for example, with some of the classes, they're talking about spring events and graduation events and all that stuff, which are kind of given. It would be interesting to see if these types of questions have been asked and then forwarded back to the rest of the student body. One of the things that I've had to struggle with is I use the student email system and I don't get a lot of response from the students on the student email system. I do more now than I did before. So like at the beginning of the year, I'd send, I sent out an email to, for example, each of the classes. We just don't get a whole lot of response, which to be quite honest, as superintendent, it's not traditional for the superintendent to get a lot of response from students, even though I'd like to get those responses. So I think what we should do is probably formalize something that actually came up earlier that I said I was concerned about doing, but based upon the two comments that were just made tonight, I'm gonna rethink that and see if we can put, put out a student survey, specifically, I think, at the high school, maybe the middle school as well. And based on the YL comments, maybe even the YL students, we could maybe turn their survey down a little bit. I'm not surprised to see that students seeing some consistency in their schedule now is a reason why they don't want to make change. What we hear as adults is from families and parents as well is that students need to be together. And that, that, you know, being a cohort is great, but coming together as a class, if you will. And just today, I met with a, a group of adults discussing the continuation of discussing reopening our schools, which is very much in play, as you're all hearing from the state and there's going to be some state information coming out about that. Um, the Commissioner's Office of, for education hasn't, has not specifically announced the specific dates and timelines, but this week they did announce K-5, followed by middle school, followed by high school is what that was the announcement. No dates were attached to it. Um, they actually said that if it was a K-4 class, uh, building or just a K-6 building, that it should be part of that. We're awaiting some further discussions on what those dates are. However, we do have a plan in place currently that's going through the process. Um, and based upon the comments tonight, we'll make sure that we get something out to students. And I would say by middle of next week, we'll make an announcement for student participation with surveys, which actually was supported by the Norton Teachers Association in a conversation earlier today.
Um, just to add on that, we do a lot of surveys in the high school and I don't know if that's the problem, but so we do surveys and kids voice their opinions, but nothing's done about it, like nothing's.
That's a good, yeah, that's a good point is that with, I think one of the big issues with the high school is communication. Like we don't get a lot of information, like even when we do surveys, like I don't know if Zoe feels the same way, but a lot of the times we'll do a survey, but nothing will ever happen with it. Like you'll take.
Like no summer of it, right?
So the key, right, so you just hit it, Zoe. The key to surveys is whatever the results are, to share them with the people or the potential people who took it. Because if you don't, then you're just wasting my time. You might find that your opinion is totally different from 75% of other people. You're one of the 16% who said, I want to come back more and yet that hasn't been shared with anybody. So those, that's what's important about surveys. And, and Mr. Savas is one of the first people on the school committee who always wants surveys to be specific and detailed and have, you know, some, some quantification that we can turn and say, okay, now what do we do for the next step? Um, beyond just touchy-feely, if you will. Um, and he is a very touchy-feely person, but he wants beyond that. Um, but I agree with you. I think it's, it's, it's making sure that when we ask somebody for anything, whoever that is, the adults or the students or parents, that we then share out that information as well so that people can see where they stand in the, in the protocols or that there is consensus to do something.
So I just want to add really quickly here, guys, not, not to beat a dead horse here, but um, so with respect to us wanting to hear your opinions, you know, Malia and I had a conversation this afternoon about the format of how you guys present to us. And I said very specifically, I said, I really like hearing the opinions of the kids. It's, it's extremely valuable to us because quite honestly, we don't hear them. Um, so, so we do like to hear them, you know, and, and I, I hope you guys continue that. With respect to whether or not we listen to you, you know, just thinking about your own survey, you know, you have a widely disparate group of answers. Some people are extremely excited to get back in. Some people are really against it and are never going back in. And you got to realize like whatever gets decided, there's a big group of people who feel like, yeah, they didn't listen to me. And that's not necessarily the case.
That it's a pandemic, you can't please everyone. I mean, it's.
Right, right. You know, and, and sometimes whether it's, whether it's, you know, there were, there were, you know, external factors which kind of don't, don't marry themselves to what you wanted, or sometimes the other side's made a more compelling argument, you know. But the, the idea of not having your voice heard, that, that's, it's, it's not our intent and it's certainly not true. You know, we, we very much want to hear everyone's voice. And, and as long as I've been working with Joe and some of these other school committee members, I will tell you, if people bring something, if they bring an issue to the, to the administration or the school committee, we do our damnedest to try and solve it. It, it, it may not be a solution that, that makes that person happy, but by all means, we, we try our best to get to that, that spot. And I'll include not just the administration, but I'll include the staff in general, teachers, et cetera. You know, I think that's true of this district in general. We always, we always try to hear people and get to where they want us to be. Sometimes it unfortunately doesn't work out that way, but it's not for lack of caring, not, not by any stretch.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's based off of like what decision is made. I think it's more just like when I asked, today I asked my Spanish class, what do you guys think about going back to school? Because a lot of them are seniors and they told me their opinion and they're like, okay, why do you want to know? And I'm like, I'm gonna go talk to the people who do this stuff. And that gave them the reassurance that their voice is being heard. So I don't think, they don't care what the decision is. I mean, yeah, they have an opinion on it, but it's just that their, their opinion is being done with, I guess.
No, that, that makes sense. If, if you feel like you're yelling into a vacuum, then there's, there's no point to it. But you know, when, when it comes to particularly you two at least, when, when you guys are asking for opinions, it does matter because it does get routed to us. So, you know, for, for what it's worth, tell them, say, hey, you know, this is, this is going forward to other people who, who do make decisions at some level, so.
I think if I, you know, I really do appreciate, I mean, we always are open. And as Dina shared, um, we absolutely try our very best to always really look at what we're being sort of told or, or what suggestions are coming our way. And, and sometimes we make decisions that don't make everybody happy and sometimes you make decisions that make other people happy. So we recognize that we're not going to make everybody happy. But just Malia and Zoe, just so you know, and if you want to share back with your, um, your, your sort of cohorts or your classmates, the decision to kind of go back to school full-time has always been something that we were considering. That in the summer when we were, or in the spring, I don't even remember now, all of the dates are getting so blended. But when we were making a decision about sort of going back to school, were we going to be remote or hybrid? What were our options? Um, I remember having at length, at nauseam conversations, you know, independently with each one of sort of the school committee members and really trying to come up with a plan that we thought would be in the best interest of everybody in regards to academic kind of, academic work. Um, also kind of in regards to health and wellness, meeting the expectations and the criteria for what was set by sort of governing bodies that were telling us sort of the rules and regulations for busing and for sort of spacing at lunches for the amount of children that could be in classrooms and everything like that. So when we were having these conversations, we clearly knew our main goal was to get kids back into school. There is no doubt. So conversations, I mean, obviously we started with a hybrid model. I think that we have been really fortunate in Norton. I think that for the most part, other districts have actually had to close schools for a week or two weeks. Um, I think in Norton, we know that we have really done something right. We haven't had to close a school. We haven't, you know, we obviously have had positive cases. We obviously have had, um, you know, sort of adults and students who have needed to be isolated or quarantined. Um, but for the most part, I think we've been fairly successful with our hybrid model. But just so you know, because I know, I think Zoe, I wrote down the number, 75% of the class does not want to go back. Um, our intention was to always figure out a way to get students back into school. So by no means is that meant to be disrespectful to those 75% of students, but maybe just pass along to them that we always sort of had that as a goal. Um, how could we get our students back in school with our amazing staff? Um, that's always been sort of a high priority of ours and a conversation that we have had really in depth since perhaps December, January. I don't exactly remember, Joe, with the dates were, when there were conversations that really we're starting to think about, can we do this? Is it feasible and is it possible? Um, and I have to be, you know, I have to thank our administration. I absolutely have to thank our staff. They have the most amazing group of representatives who work with administration weekly to really have these conversations and to really come up with plans and ideas of how we can do it appropriately and safely and follow guidelines. Um, so if you don't mind passing that along, Zoe and Malia, that it doesn't mean that we didn't hear them. We know that there's a bunch of students who maybe don't want to go back, but that's always sort of been our main goal was how are we going to get our students back into school? So I don't know if anybody else has any comments, but I really do appreciate you sort of sharing that. Oh, sorry, Sheri, go ahead.
I just want to say, I, I, you know, agree with a lot of what you just said. And, you know, we have worked really hard, especially with the high school kids, to be able to give them the opportunity to play the sports that they love and try to get back to some of the clubs and things like that. You know, that takes a lot of effort. Um, and sometimes I think, you know, kids may forget a lot of the back, you know, behind the scene things that are going on to keep them safe. Um, but more importantly, I just want to say, I give a lot of credit to Zoe and Malia and I'm really proud of the two of you because, you know, as students yourselves and younger students, to come to a school committee meeting and say the things that you've said, which I'm sure were not easy for you. Um, I just think that, that's, you, you guys deserve a lot of credit and, and thank you for, uh, for bringing that to our attention. We certainly do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just think just students need some reassurance, that's all. And although it may not come from us because they don't really believe other students, it just, someone in charge just needs a little push, I guess.
Thank you. We, we absolutely hear everything you said. Appreciate it. Any other seeing none? Um, we are going to move on to the really fun discussion of the FY22 school budget. So do I maybe put that over to you, Matt? Dr. Bayetta?
It'll be me first and Matt will be part of the discussions and anyone else that wants to come in. Um, I'm going to start with sharing the screen with you in a second here. Um, the, you have a handout, but I, I wanted to kind of go more globally and then we'll talk about the handout that you have as well. Um, the FY22 school budget recommendation is really grounded on returning to school, the recovery process and then acceleration that we think we, we need to move forward from. Um, in particular, I want to try to address the budget process that we had, which was clearly guided by a process that went down to the school levels with principals, administrators, teacher input. Um, anyone who wants to input in that process is, everybody gets this, the general same email and communication through Matt's office. Then it comes to my office, becomes a superintendent's recommendation to you, from you, your final vote of changes you want to make to it, et cetera, is your school committee recommendation. And then goes to the finance committee as a recommendation, then they make their own recommendation and then it finally goes to town, to town meeting. So when we look at our plan, um, one of the things that we really wanted to do was to take a look at four areas. Um, full reopening of all five of our campus schools in person. So this budget is grounded and we are back full-time in the fall. It is, it does not have options included in it. Um, that is something that would have to be determined in another process, if you will. Um, maintaining programs that worked prior and during COVID, um, supporting, supporting learning loss and learning acceleration and then being flexible to the needs of students. A little bit different of approach than we've had, if you will, uh, in the past. The, um, sorry, I'm just trying to get this thing to work. The mandated budget is a cost of approximately $380,000. Um, this includes two special education teachers for the LGN and Norton High School specialized programs. These are must haves. Um, a paraprofessional also attached to the LGN specialized program. Um, adding a school psychologist district-wide, an occupational therapist district-wide, and a board-certified behavior analyst district-wide. And I've included in your packet job descriptions for all of those that are different titles that you might have not seen in the past so that you could have an, do the same thing with the FinCom and those outside of the traditional process. Our general education budget includes the very discussions we've had about adding the digital instructional specialist, a reading specialist, which is targeting under general education. This is not a special education service. Uh, this is a general education service as we look at the students and loss and potential, and potential getting students over the top to grade level. Um, the .3 instructional tech staff, that is actually making part-time people full-time. And then moving the part-time music teacher at the high school to full-time for a total of 163,000 in general education. By the way, these two line items are our two smallest line items we've had in all the time that I've been here. Um, when we look at the total budget increase for personnel, it's 543,000. Um, the staff appropriations at $393,000, of which 150,800 is coming from school choice slash stimulus funds. Um, you'll see in a page later on that we have $721,000 in current stimulus funds that have been given to us that can be used over the next two fiscal years as also known as ESSA II, E-S-S-A. Um, ESSA III is that 1.9 billion. That's still in Congress. We don't know what that's going to look like. Um, but that is not part of this budget because it's not part of our process as we, as we speak. And then staff.
Yeah. The, just, just for clarification, the total new staff with school choice stimulus funds, the 150,800, that's coming from stimulus or school choice or a mix of the two?
Potentially right now, a mix of the two. Uh, we'll know more in the next few weeks of exactly what road to take with it, but right now it's a mix of the two.
And it would be, it would be from current school choice earnings?
Correct.
Okay.
Um, and then the staff reorganization is a grade one that you added to the LGN coming from reorganization of, of K-5, depending on class size, which I also gave to you in the other report that you have. Um, this return recovery and acceleration are the added position not only under mandates, mandates, but also position that supports students academic and SEL to accelerate, which as you know, we're very much into. I would say that anything that supports a student being able to read is part of the social emotional development of children, especially for any of us who have had children that have struggled with reading or myself as a student. Um, a continuation of our one-to-one technology initiative. Um, I have to say that, um, I've been proud of a lot of things what, that we've done and I've been really proud of a lot of the things that we've done during COVID, especially for my staff. But if it wasn't for this, I don't know where we would be. If we hadn't had the school choice funds to do the instructional technology and the work that Karen and her team have done, um, I, I just don't know where we would have been during this whole situation. Um, the utilization of 1.7 million dollars in school choice funds for staffing supplies and materials, uh, most of those are in the area of staffing. It's the instructional tech situation. In the supplies, it's those one-time curriculum costs like we've done in all the other budgets through the years. In this case, it's approximately $160,000 in that line item as well. And then the continuation of the added technology. And then the full utilization of the federal stimulus ESSA II funding source, 721,176,000. And then the circuit breaker is set at 65%. If it comes in at 70 or 75%, we'll be better off for it in the special education department because the money is only earmarked for that department. It can't go anywhere else. I mean, for tutoring, I've increased tutoring for post-COVID support by $70,000. Um, and we are also awaiting ESSA III. I've also increased, and it's not in here, it should have been put in here, but I've also increased our ESY program costs by, um, um, trying to provide more services and also to make it more competitive salary in those areas because of trying to find staff. This summer is not going to be easy. Um, and we know that. But this are, these are earmarked funds. I've made a commitment that ESSA III funds should be part of extended day programming for the fall for students that are going to be potentially having to catch up and accelerate in areas of reading in particular and numeracy at the, at the younger grades versus the tutoring all over the place money, which could be happening in any grade level to support students in any kind of loss that they've had and/or to support them as they're learning new skill sets. The mandated increases as a total percentage of the budget is 3.02%. The general education increase is 2.53%. The total increase for the budget is 5.55% just by adding the two. The, the, uh, also added to that is we are recommending the decrease or maintain the current fees. The Little Lancers preschool would be maintained as is prior to COVID. There would be no increase in this program's fees. Transportation would be set at $250 per student. Um, that is a decrease of $100 and it's an increase from this year because we're going back to five days a week. Athletics would be set at 250 per year. Again, that would be full seasons of sports versus the 200 that we came down to this year, which was only partial seasons. And all student activities would be maintained as is. Roughly, those are predominantly $50 projects.
Real quick. On the athletics fee, is that 250 for all sports or there are certain adjustments for certain?
We typically have done an adjustment for hockey only at three, at $100. We typically have done an adjustment for hockey only at three, at a hundred dollars more. Um, right now this would be, uh, we're, we're noting it as two fifty. If the committee wants to have discussions, that's been the one difference in the prior years.
Okay, thank you. And are we planning on capping either one of those transportation or athletics?
We are not.
And can I just ask, um, your reason for decreasing fees? So I don't want to be, um, negative about this, but if, if I understand the budget, the way that I reviewed it, I'm not sure that this is the year, I, I, I understand it's the year for all of us as parents. I mean, every year for parents, we want to reduce fees, but why are you choosing to reduce fees when we know that our budget is so fragile?
Right. So this is, this is always an area where the committee and I will probably have further discussions that if the budget comes in at a number that's woeful, we might have to bring this back to the three fifty. What I, what I tried to utilize is I, I, I did three things, uh, when we looked at the sports, we looked at a way to try to freeze some of our expenses. And caught, take our costs down in some of our areas, which we were able to do. Thank you to Aaron Sumner and Matt Wells's work. Aaron presented a budget that, um, for example, brings middle school sports into the budget. For example, uh, brings the fees down. All of that with a bottom line increase to that budget of sixteen thousand dollars. So the bottom line increase after taking all of the negatives and positives of every line item, it's a total increase of under seventeen thousand dollars. If I remember correctly, Matt, and you can tell me I'm right or wrong, but I think I'm right. Um, and I, I just think that this is a, a, a good start for us to have a discussion. And again, what happens with my budget that, that then goes to you and then whatever the town is recommending. Um, if the town comes in at a certain number that's significantly less than this number, then we might have to reconsider this conversation. I'm also concerned, uh, about post-COVID and what it means to the ability to pay. And having students who don't come forward because of costs, we've already had to do that this year with even just going to the limited seasons that we've had. And, and the third part is that we still know that we're supporting a lot of families through other, other means because of unemployment and all of that. So again, we could play with this a little bit. Um, but we just think that it's, it's time to have some more difficult discussions, including the potential that if school choice comes in at a higher number, that we could offset these costs by utilizing more school choice.
Joe, I, I'm gonna weigh in real quick here and just say, and I, if memory serves me, you said sixteen thousand.
Yeah.
Just this originally for this year, I think it was a ten thousand dollar, um, ten thousand dollar hit, if you will. So I, I would make the observation that on a, on a thirty-two million plus dollar budget, ten thousand dollars is, I hate to say not, not really a big deal, but it really isn't. Um, versus the, I think the positive to the families who get a reduced fee is, is considerably high. So, uh, for, for what it's worth, I would, I would strongly support cutting the fees. I, I, I think it means a lot more to the families in Norton than, than the ten thousand to sixteen thousand is going to mean to our budget, quite frankly.
I, I appreciate you saying it that way because there's a lot of ten thousands that we're going to be leaving out this year. And this ten thousand is one of the ones we're putting in and I, and, and, and one of the things that I'm, you know, I've, I've had discussions with a lot of people about is some of our expense lines and simply saying, no, we can't do it this coming year because we're going to prioritize some, um, some other areas. Um, you know, we still got, you know, hey, congratulations, you're in the Astronaut Society. Give me fifty bucks. I mean, to me, it's like, you know, uh, absurd and another area that I think we need to look down down the road. Um, the current color increases for agreed contracts is set at two percent for the Norton Teachers Association, the paraprofessionals. We are currently working with all of the other unions. We have put money into this budget as part of the ongoing negotiations. Um, as you know, all administrators, myself and others are all under performance clauses. Um, so those numbers in the contract are literally the numbers that fit or the budget are numbers that fit within our clauses. It does not mean that that's the money that we get, um, in the same way, uh, we're not guaranteed, uh, our money. And then on, on, and that, that's the last line. Um, the line item budget, I'm going to stop sharing this and I think I remembered how to do this. And it's teaching me how to do all this stuff. Um, do, 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 do. Where did I put it? You'd be proud of me if I get this right, Jen. One more second here.
So far she's not proud.
Well, sometimes, you know, not all of us can just click, click, click because you're clicking those million dollars every day.
I'm super proud.
I was gonna say, he's very much improved.
So I've been working on this because it's one of my goals. I gotta get, continue to get better in technology. If I ask my teachers to put themselves out there, I have to do the same thing and I get to do mine publicly, which that's even more interesting. Um, so this is the packet that you've, you've received, the staff received. It's a basic account again, um, of the general, um, view, um, of, um, what we're trying to accomplish. Um, one of the things that I think is really important here is that we're trying to make our budget really easy to follow along. We're constantly told that it's too complicated, that it has too many lines. So here you go. It's really simple. Where did we start with the budget on your left? Um, what's my recommendation as a total? What's that as an increase? What's that percentage as a cost, uh, on the cost center? What's that as a, uh, increase on the total budget? And then below, it just goes across with the, the simpler numbers. Um, the part of it that's important here, um, excuse me for a second, is we've also for this budget, let me blow this up a little bit. We've also taken a look at all of those expenses that I brought up earlier. Um, and then what the total is, what we're taking out. And again, that's on the left side. And then the change, the potential change of, um, elementary teacher at the J C S. Um, again, I say J C S, it doesn't mean that because we have to go through seniority and protocol. So please, everybody at the J C S and other schools, you know how this works. Um, but i- it is a process that we have to go through in order to utilize class size. Um, and again, that's based on, I can guess is on class size. Um, and then this is our, all of our revolving accounts. So this is where, uh, on the left side, you can see how are we using choice? Um, how we're using it for each of the expense lines. Then on the right side, you have our revolving accounts. Those are specific to those lines. They can't go where, somewhere else. Then you have our grants. You'll see the ESSA two is in there. Um, and then at the bottom, you'll see the circuit breaker at sixty-five percent, and that gives us the total revolving and the total that we're actually, um, using. Um, and then these are all, every single one of these is line items. What the increase left to right, we have to show three years. So what the actual expense was in FY nineteen was twenty-eight thousand nine thirty-one for legal fees, then FY twenty-one, the budget, then FY twenty-two budget proposal is the same. I'm, uh, um, I'm basically just going across with a zero percent increase. So you have the, you have the actual increase in dollar signs and that's all the way through. And then if I scroll down real quick, and again, people can take the time to, to look at any line item that they wish. I always have at least one or two people that maybe help us find, uh, an area that needs to be further cleaned up. We've been trying to clean this up for the last, um, couple of years. You'll see that same number on page twenty of twenty. Twenty-eight, uh, five, ten, seven, thirty, went to thirty-one, oh, three, six, eight, three, nine. Went to the now recommendation of thirty-two, seven, fifty-nine, three, eight, four, which is a five point five five increase. Next item, um, I don't know if you have further questions on that? If you don't, I'll just move to, yeah.
Do you want to, is this?
Yeah, go ahead. You can go right on the budget. That's fine.
All right. So, um, I, I have two, two comments slash concerns, I guess. Um, if, if we go back up to the top page on, on this here. Uh, sorry, yeah, yeah, yep, that one. Yep. So, you know, I, I, I get, I get the, the rules and the rationale behind it. But our, our mandated educational expenses continue to increase at an exponentially higher rate than our general education. It, it's, it's a long-term problem. It's not a today problem, but there is absolutely no way that mathematically that is going to be sustainable. It, it is not going to work. I'm, I'm, I'm telling you. So this is more for, I guess, the state than you. But they, they gotta figure something out that, that is not going to work long-term. It's just.
So Dinesh, to respond to you, um, there's two good pieces of information I'd like to share with you tonight, and I'm glad you brought it up as you always, uh, bring up the key points. Um, the first thing is that, um, the Steve Howitt, Representative Steve Howitt, has signed on to a M A S S bill, um, currently the only one. Uh, but he's moving it forward as a docket, which hopefully then becomes a bill to support, um, the reimbursement rate increased to ninety percent in special education for students whose costs are in excess of X dollars. So in other words, I believe it's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So for those students, um, of which we have those types of students, we would see a ninety percent reimbursement and not the tr- the traditional, uh, reimbursement, uh, process. It's a very positive bill and I've already texted him and emailed him and thanked him for, for supporting the filing of that. Um, the second one is, uh, the continuation.
Can I ask you a question about that?
Yeah, yeah.
Are you saying a reimbursement of ninety percent above two fifty or if the cost is over two fifty?
So, so that's the formula piece that needs to be worked out. The way that it's looking at right now is that you would be getting the following year. The way that we wanted to read is that we want the state to be, to be supporting more of those outlier tuitions in cost than they have in the past.
Right. Cause, cause those are two very different scenarios.
Yes, yes. The, the state always wants to look to the lesser cost scenario to them. What we're saying in this case is that these are, these are, um, situations that aren't happening by, like most districts, you don't have, um, uh, the bigger districts you do, but smaller districts like us. That these are, these are situations that we think require more of a fair balance to, um, um, if you will, cost to the, to the local taxpayer.
Like, you know, one or two of those is, is a huge hit.
Um, if you remember a couple of years ago, we had two of them in one year. Um, and they came after July first, um, costing us eight hundred thousand dollars. Um, if, if second to use that, um, that's, and by the way, that's a two-year process, right? It could happen this year, but usually it's a two-year process and let's hope that other people piggyback on it. I've been pushing it as part of the legislative team for M A S S. The, the second one that I think is important is actually two pieces. Number one, fully funding sec- uh, circuit breaker. Um, instead of at sixty-five or seventy-five percent, at a hundred percent bringing in on, on average for most of us, somewhere between twenty-five and thirty-five percent more. Um, so that, what that would mean is that, you know, if you take the first forty thousand off, then you get, you get more of the money on the other side that's left over instead of what they do now. The third part is the one that's been passed and they're trying to figure out how to do it. And I don't know, Matt, if you want to add to this, but there's a big discussion and it was approved and put into law that there be a circuit breaker for special education transportation. That is a huge number for Norton Public Schools. Um, that's a deal breaker for us, especially when it comes to seeing the increases in transportation that we've seen in the last few years. Matt, do you want to talk about that?
Uh, sure. So that's kind of an interesting piece. Um, we're all very hopeful that this gets pushed through. We know that the law, it kind of has been passed and we've been collecting the numbers and, and sharing them with Desi. Uh, the problem is that when the funding comes forward, they're just, it just isn't there to, to, to do the transportation at this point in time. But it could be another, as much as a hundred thousand dollars that comes in for our, our special education, um, reimbursement. Um, the, there is a, uh, they really want to move this forward. It just, you know, the, the, at this point, there has to be more money. That's be a bigger pot of money for that to come in, in our direction. So we do continue, um, going through the motions. We do, we put it together. And once a filing comes forward, we're going to be able to, to, to just send it in right away and be ready to move on it.
I find it ironic that they're, they can't figure out how to pay for it, so they ask us to pay for it.
Yeah. Yeah. Uh, and, and especially in a community in, like Norton, because you're only getting seventy-two thousand dollars more from the state this year. That doesn't pay for, um, you know, for our athletic, uh, increase. I mean, it's, it's just. Yeah, anyways, um.
So, so that was my, my first, um, issue. The second one, so we'll go to the revolving accounts and I'm sure you're not shocked to hear me saying this.
Yep. You see this?
Uh, next one. That, yep. Uh, nope, sorry. Next one after that.
This one here. Yep.
That's the one. So I, it, it's possible I'm reading this wrong and I, I hope I am. So we're going to expend one point seven million in school choice money in the FY twenty-two budget. Is that correct?
Yes.
And eight hundred thousand of it is going to be carryover from FY twenty-one, school choice money we didn't spend in twenty-one?
Matt, you want to explain it?
Yes, that's correct. Um, so yeah, we're going to be carrying over eight hundred thousand dollars. We're utilizing, um, nine hundred thousand dollars of FY twenty-two choice receipts. Um, that's a, a conservative number. Uh, this year we received a million dollars in, uh, FY in choice funds. And so that nine hundred thousand is just, we're kind of protecting ourselves a little bit. Additionally, there's probably another two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand that will carry over aside from this money. Um, right now we're just retaining that, um, towards an FY twenty-one, just in case we need it for any kind of expenditures.
Sorry, Matt, just to clarify, an additional two to two fifty that will carry over into twenty twenty-two or is going to carry over after twenty twenty-two?
Into twenty twenty-two. So that bottom line right now, we're showing right there on that page is zero. But I, I do intend to, I, I, right now we're holding that money in FY twenty-one, just in case there's expenditures. I don't want to show it here because we may have to spend it, but we're, we're doing everything we can to carry that over as well. So that number could actually be, uh, uh, an additional two hundred and, to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that carries over.
So if it, let's assume best case scenario, it is two fifty. So we're, we're expending these things. Essentially, we're expending all of it, all the one point seven into the operational budget.
Yeah.
And I know Joe knows exactly where I'm going with this. So next year it's in our operational budget. We're carrying over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. However, we're using eight hundred thousand in carryover here. So we're going to come up short. We're going to come five fifty short to reach that eight hundred thousand. So we're going to be in a five hundred and fifty thousand dollar hole next year.
Potentially, yes. Now here's the other side of it. If you look at ESSA three over two fiscal years, that gives us more than the flexibility. ESSA three is not part of this budget at all, unlike others that are putting it in. I haven't because I don't know what that money is. What I can tell you is that if ESSA three does come through and it's a big if, um, it'll be over a million dollars easy.
Yeah, I, I, I hear you, but guys, I mean, this is, this is something we've had this conversation for a while now. And I, and I get why we've done what we've had to do and we really did have to do it. Um, and, and, you know, with respect to, to carryover from last year, you ran the money. It was a smart thing to do. You know, but as, as we put this money into our operational budget, we are, we are digging a hole. And we are, we are going to come to the day when we can't get out of that hole and it's going to be sooner rather than later.
So they, they, then, then, you know, then the idea is that you're asking us to, to eliminate eight hundred thousand dollars from this budget.
I'm, I'm saying I'm concerned. I, I have concerns, guys. And, and this is, you know, it's eight hundred that got built up over time, you know, I mean, it's.
It's that, you know, when it comes down to, uh, Dinesh, it comes down to two things. We had to, we, we, we had to overspend during COVID to run two school systems at the same time this year with only partial funds coming, two hundred and fifty thousand coming until, um, the, uh, until December thirty-first. And then from January to June, we had to come up with another three hundred thousand dollars worth of running a D L A program and backfilling F M L A. That's the issue.
I know, I get it. I, I get why it happened and, and this isn't, you know, in the words of Cam Newton, I'm not pointing fingers, I point thumbs, like, I, I, I had to approve all this stuff. Like it's, I, I get why we're, we're at where we're at. But I'm just pointing out where we're at, like we're, we're, you know.
So our, our goal.
Talking about this budget and, and that we are going to get into trouble and, and we all agreed what we were going to do on this stuff and, and, you know, we're all culpable here. I'm just pointing out to, I guess, maybe the public at large, like w- we're coming up to the wall, like we, we've, we've been driving forward and saying, okay, well, our brakes will work, our brakes will work. We're coming up to the wall pretty soon, guys. I mean, it's, it's not going to be much longer before we, we cannot find the money to do this. I'm, I'm not saying to cut eight hundred thousand out of the budget because what, what's, what's the point of that? And we don't want to hold the eight hundred for next year. I mean, there's no, there's no real reason to do that, quite honestly. But I'm just pointing out that we, we are, we have a hole and it is coming and it is coming soon.
Well, we'll try to rub the budget a little bit more over the next few, uh, few days and get it back for next Thursday to see if we've made any changes. If there's something we can find.
I'm not saying you need to cut the eight hundred out. I, I.
No, no, I, I, I will see if we, if we, we'll, we'll go through it and we'll see if, if we can, you know, massage it some more in a way that, you know, makes it more conservative.
I mean, I'm, I'm going to say something that I, I absolutely hate that I'm, I'm about to say, but this is kind of an FY twenty-three problem right now. It's just something to think about, but, but we gotta really start thinking about it. This, this, you know, the, it's, it's the old rainy day thing. Well, guess what? It's raining. It, it's, it's starting to rain, man. We gotta, we gotta find an umbrella fast.
Can I just, um, clarify or add, um, ask? So maybe kind of school budgets for those who get very overwhelmed when we look at these numbers. So if I am not mistaken, you potentially, um, Dr. Bayetta will be going to the town to present a budget that has a five point five five percent increase. Traditionally, what does the town traditionally sort of do in regards to our budget for an increase? I don't believe it's traditionally that high. Am I mistaken?
It's been traditionally around three percent at town meeting and then come back in the fall for materials and supplies.
Okay. So my, my guess is, is that maybe it will be very similar, right? It will be sort of closer to the three. Um, and then we potentially can go back in the fall. Um, and then we potentially can go back in the fall perhaps to ask for more money. But if I could piggyback on what Denaz said, so basically what we are doing is with the eight hundred thousand dollars that Denaz is sort of commenting in regards to school choice money, that is in the budget. And we are potentially still requesting a five point five percent, right? So am I understanding correctly that um even with sort of the use of school choice money, that we're still going to be a little bit, I I guess we're we're not going to make that increase with the five point five percent that is being requested. Am I understanding that correctly?
That's correct.
So I I I think that I am not a math wizard like Denaz, but I know enough um over the years of the concern of this school budget. And it concerns me as well um greatly. Because we once again, and and I think all of us looking at this know that five point five percent, when we look at the increase in mandated education alone is three percent. Um, it it's just very concerning where we're at. So I certainly am not a solution maker at all, I'm not suggesting to be, but um, my novice eyes looking at this today, I sort of picked up on a couple of things that just for me um seemed a little concerning. So um, just wanted to kind of raise that because I think when we do present this to the town and when it does go to town meeting, I'm not sure we're going to get the five point five five percent that um is sort of.
Carolyn, I just want to say something just to be very clear, like I I I think this is a solution that has to be discussed on, you know, on the grander scale. It has to be discussed with the town side as well, because this is, this isn't just a schools issue, i- it's not.
Right.
Um, and and this is, again, this is not to fault anybody, I'm 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 not saying that that we did anything wrong. We're we're where we're at because circumstances dictated that, quite frankly. And again, the fact that we held the eight hundred was was extremely smart, quite honestly, because we wouldn't have had it this year. So it it was, it was a good thing we did, it was a good thing we didn't expend it last year, I'm glad to have it. But again, it it's after this, it's gone, you know, maybe we have the two fifty to carry over, but that's that's not anywhere near eight hundred. You know, and and as as you know, I mean, our our costs, they're not going down, they're going up. So, you know, it's it's a it's a conversation, I think, I think as as a town, the town of Norton, not the town side, but the town of Norton as a whole, we're going to have to start making some some choices here about what what we want to be and who we are as a town.
You know, I I I think these budget discussions kind of pretty much go the same every year. You know, I I I've been, I've been here for, I think, six, six years now. Um, and every year we seem to have the same conversations when it comes to the budget. And, you know, just in the last couple of years, we started saying, you know, mandated versus, you know, non mandated and things. So we've separated it, we've done everything we've can, you know. This is not our typical budget year with all of our excess expenses, you know, for the last few months and and all the unknowns. And we've managed to do what we can with our budget. I I respectfully, you know, I agree with you, Denaz. However, you know, we held the money because it was an uncommon year and 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 things like that. You know, while it may be an effort for for F Y twenty three, as you mentioned, you know, I think this budget is is one of the better looking first drafts I've seen in all my years um that I've been doing this. Um, you know, and 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 again, I agree that we do have to have tough conversations as a town. Um, it seems every year we say that and we don't have those discussions. So um, again, you know, I I credit the administration team uh and Matt and and Joe. This this to me, as I said, this is one of the better looking first drafts that that I've seen in all my years. But um, you know, I I I agree that, you know, it's been challenging. But to me, this this looks good for us as a starting point.
Yeah, I I don't disagree with the the carryover, the eight hundred, I need to be very clear about that. And I think all I'm saying is if you take this budget and move it to F Y twenty three right now, don't change anything, no expenses go up, nothing. You have a half million dollar plus uh hole and and we have no way to cover that, so we have to cut half million dollars worth of expenses. So, I mean, it's it's, you know, this isn't, it it's not me saying like I'm I'm against this president or anything like that, I'm just, I'm just pointing out the math of it. The math is what it is, it's you, you can't, you can't argue away math, so.
I I thought we could. I'll go back, uh, sorry to go so quickly through the pages, but I'll just get to the enrollment. Um, so as you know, every month, um, I get a copy, this is the the most recent, February. It'll show you um left to right, you got the J C S and underneath the L G N and the Hay Middle School and High School. And then within each, you've got the district, the school choice and the reeds. Um, the at at this year, we we have one hundred and sixty eight school choice students up from um one, I think it was one thirty nine last year. Um, the district enrollment at twenty two sixty six um and a total of twenty four seventy nine. Um, and then what we have um is we basically take a look at this enrollment and we move it forward and make some changes. And I'll be giving you some projections as part of that, um, I believe it's next week. When we look at um the next couple of pages, it's all of the different rationales um and job descriptions um utilizing some data for the B C B A position, which which we only have one. Um, this would make it two and what the job description entails, I'm not going to read these, the digital learning specialist, which we already have one, as you know, that we picked up this year, adding a second, so breaking that up a little bit. Um, the literacy specialist, uh, reading seeking position. Um, and that's the general gist of all of the different um um areas that we've added to the budget under the mandated or the digital learning, which are actually um and and reading literacy, which is actually under general education. Um, a couple of things that I I wanted to just, as we close this out for the first time and the next, next time, next week, we'll talk again. Then we have a public hearing, I believe, the week afterwards, we have to vote it next week, which we normally do, uh, because we have to get it to um got to get it to the uh to the town, uh, actually Friday, next Friday, if I remember correctly, we'll be working on the packet uh this coming week so that we can get it to the town. Um, then we'll go to FinCom, uh, I have a FinCom night, I think it's the twenty second of March, if I remember correctly. Uh, no, Matt's shaking his head.
I believe it's the fifteenth, we switched to the fifteenth.
Okay.
Um, they didn't have a twenty second available for us.
Okay. Okay, now I still have it as the twenty second, so I I'll wait for that to come out. Um, so the other thing that I really think is um is important in our discussions here um as we move forward is um as we try to prioritize um um our students and then our staff and the needs that are needed. One of the big bubbles that's going to be here is not really sure what this is going to look like. So I I just want to publicly have that discussion real quickly in thirty seconds, forty five seconds or less. We currently do not have a scenario in this budget, nor do I think we should, that provides all kinds of options for next fall. We're think, we're looking at a reopening, the reopening is going to look different. We're probably still in masks in the fall, that's probably still happening and we're probably still doing all kinds of mitigation and all of that. But the options of D L A, the options, those are all conversations um that we have to have. Because we also just just don't want to lose enrollment for parents who don't want to send their their students to school because they're still worried. So those are discussions we're going to have to have this spring as well and to see what that um that looks like. Um, the the other part is that this is not a Norton thing, this is a total across the state situation. Um, it's happening everywhere, everyone's trying to figure it out without really knowing. But yet, uh, we're lucky enough that we're talking about it this late, a lot of school districts have to have their budgets in by December thirty first, by by local charter. Um, and then the state legislature still hasn't provided its numbers, right? So we have House ones come out, we're looking for the House number, the Senate number, the Senate number is usually much better than the House number and, you know, so on and so forth. So we'll have to see where numbers come out, we could end up getting some more money somewhere. Um, we could end up getting some money directly through E S A that comes to the state, then comes back to the schools versus the one that could be good, coming directly to us. And then there's the potential for funds that are going towards municipalities. And then there's potential for funds that come to us that go to municipalities. So just to make sure that you have kind of like the ballpark ballpark picture of what's going on with all of that. And we'll do this again in some shape or form um next week on the, I think it's the eleventh. Um, or whatever, no, not the eleventh, the uh, the fourth and then the following week. Um, I think actually next week we'll vote in the following week, um, so we can get it into the town. Thanks for your comments, by the way.
Well, thanks, Joe, thanks, Matt, I know that um and and really everybody involved um at in Norton Public Schools to really help put this together, so um we really appreciate it. I think that, of course, the budget's never an easy conversation to have and we always wish that we had more money. So thanks for trying your best, Matt, I know that you um really pay a lot of attention to really trying to figure out how we can do the best with what we have. So very much appreciated.
Carolyn, thank you for saying that, because I I I totally missed it. Thank you to the entire administrators uh across the district um and all the work that goes into this. This is just more work on top of more work. Um, and and they do a great job and and um, you know, we kind of minimize it by the time it gets here. But it's hours upon hours of them looking at their own line items that they control and trying to figure it out, so thank you to them. Um, and especially shout out to Wade Lazard, whose total budget increase was zero.
Wade, you are impressive, again, always, um, so, thank you. We are going to move on, um, let's see, where are we? Vote to award vendor selection of food service request for proposal.
I'll divert Mr. Wells.
Okay, so we, yeah, um, we ran our bid for food service. Um, the last time the bid was done was in twenty eighteen and at that time, we were only allowed to do a three year bid uh for food service programs. Um, we have since gotten the ability to do what is essentially a five year, it's a one year contract with four one year renewals. So uh, we went out for a five year this time, which is great, it's going to uh kind of settle into uh having an organization for a little bit longer. Um, we had three bids, uh, three firms that submitted bids, Chartwells, Fresh Picks Cafe and Genuine Foods. Uh, Chartwells was uh has submitted the most advantageous uh proposal, taking into account both the uh the relative merits and the price. Uh, so we are recommending a vote to award the vendor selection to Chartwells.
Give me your Carolina.
It's sorry, I thought I clicked it, any questions, comments? Seeing none, we can just vote on that, right, is that?
Yep, vote on the recommendation as as forward.
Okay, is there a vote? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, you said it.
Okay, is there a vendor who provides more, um, perhaps I can offer this to you, Matt? There is a question, is there a vendor who provides more nutritional, I'm sorry, I just lost the question.
Uh, more nutritional options. Um, so I I mean, Chartwell said, most of our our nutritional uh our nutritional database is based upon the standards that are set for us by the state and by the USDA, uh, we fight, we have to follow what they dictate for for nutritional guidelines. So everything that we pull in and and serve to students has a very detailed nutritional uh information about it. Uh, Chartwells does uh has been uh um publishing that, so it's available if you go to the the webpage and you you click through some of Chartwell's information. You click on some of the menus, um, it does, it leads you through a lot of that. So uh, we 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 do have nutritional standards that were required to hit um by the USDA. So most of our our food service firms are going to offer the same level of food, it it meets the standards and the requirements. Um, using a a firm like Chartwell versus doing it in house, um, you get more leverage uh on on better food quality as far as ordering goes, because they have the ability to order for a larger number of of accounts and then have it spread out to to the different accounts. So um, then then, so like I said, nutritional standards are set by the state and by the USDA.
Thanks, Matt.
So if I can just chime in for one second, you know, I was on the review um R F P for this. Um, you see a lot of the same things when it comes to this proposal, when it comes to the nutritional value. You know, I think, you know, we we have to take everything collectively when it comes to to Chartwell, I mean, they had, they had, you know, limited options this year because of, you know, the circumstances that we're in, but um, you know, when it came to the overall performance, Chartwell was was a clear clearly better candidate. Um, so I think it's it's a, unfortunately, it is a combination of they just have a limited menu this year versus the nutritional value, it's it's the same across, it's the same across all three bits. Um, they're they're almost identical, it just came down to availability uh in in some of these companies just aren't close by that we could rely on them.
Thanks, Dan. So um, seeing no additional questions, we can move to a vote. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation for the vendor selection of Chartwells as presented?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, Sherry?
Yes.
Denaz?
Yes.
Kathleen? Will it? Yes, Kathleen and Dan?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Thanks for your time to work on that, appreciate it.
No, thank you for the vote.
So we are going to move to discussion and vote on Fall Two and Spring Athletic Fees. Is that you again, Matt?
Uh, so sure, yeah, we um, we brought forward for the Fall Two season, um, we we've run the numbers and we know that uh what we put together, we can support uh a reduction to the two hundred dollars, which we have seen in the previous seasons this year uh from the three fifty. Uh, so we are requesting that we reduce to that. Um, we did also look at the spring uh numbers, we started running those. However, um, Aaron wanted to hold off on moving forward any kind of vote on the spring because it's looking like spring might actually have a full season. They may not cut any of the games, any of the practices, even have uh some tournament play for the team. So there there it looks like there's going to be pretty minimal cuts as far as that goes. So we we may have to look at that a little bit more just to make sure that we, the the costs that we can put together um would support any kind of a reduction. So for right now, we we really um tried to look at the Fall Two season and reducing that from the three fifty to the two hundred.
Okay, is there any questions, concerns, any comments? Seeing none, can you just refresh my memory, Matt, what are the Fall Two sports? I know it was volleyball, what were, do you remember?
Uh, volleyball, football, uh, boys and girls indoor track and um, there's volleyball, football, track, was there one other?
Do you know, Sherry?
The cheerleading?
Oh, cheerleading, yeah, cheerleading, yeah, yeah.
Wade, that was a great um.
I thought Wade and Donna were doing the wave, I was like.
Hmm, I thought they were throwing up a touchdown sign, I said, I already got football, guys.
Well, I think we were able to successfully make it through a winter sports season and our fingers are crossed that we will successfully make it through uh sort of Fall Two sports season. So um, I'm excited, I hope that it all works out as well as it did. And I certainly don't have any questions and I'm happy to support um the reduction to two hundred. So um, seeing no questions, no comments, but we just move um. So we will put the Spring Athletic Fees conversation on hold for now and we will just vote for the Fall Two uh Athletic.
Madam, if I may?
Sure.
For the public record, as the superintendent of schools and an appointed official, my daughter is a participant in the Fall Two Sports and I have left the administration to resolve this, thank you.
Absolutely, understood, um.
Are we supposed to specify that too, Joe?
No, you're elected officials, I'm an appointed official.
Very good.
Could be seen that I'm pushing for a benefit to myself.
Gotcha.
Understood, um, so is there a motion to approve the athletic fee of two hundred dollars for the for the Fall Two Sports season? So, second?
Second.
Thank you, um, all in favor, Sherry?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Denaz?
Yes.
And Carolyn's a yes, thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Um, Dr. Beata, other business? Anything?
Yeah, I just, I know you have one, um, and I did send that resolution as a draft, so it can be discussed next week. But um, I know there's a lot of comments going on, I did make a release last night on the reopening school, I'm asking folks to to be patient, as I said last night. Um, it hasn't taken an announcement by the Commonwealth to have us working on a plan. We are in fact working on physical plans for reopening, uh, looking at students and so on and so forth. And shortly, um, we will have announcements, uh, we have a working um group that's looking at all this. Um, our staff has been patiently um continuingly to do what they've been doing um to support students and themselves. And I would expect a release sooner than later um and um and with specifics and details to grades and transportation. And I would expect a release sooner than later, and, and with specifics and details to grades and transportation and food services and so on and so forth. So I know that there's petitions out there, and there's comments on Facebook and so on and so forth about not enough communication, which I happen to disagree with, but that's fine. I can take that criticism. But we are working on the continuation of reopening, which we have been doing since, to be quite honest, since January. It's just a work in progress.
Joe, can I just say, I think one of the, probably one of the bigger issues, and I don't know that you can even talk to this at this point, but just from some dialogue that I had today on Facebook, I think the main question that people are wondering is just the timeline. You know, and I don't know that you, if you can give, you know, an exact, you know, that's still being worked on, but just a general.
The guideline, the guidelines, yeah, so the guidelines that the commissioner announced the other day have no dates on them. What they have is April for K to five, then followed by middle school, six to eight, then followed by nine to 12. Those have been the general guidelines. We have some districts that have put out plans or have started to put out plans or have been working on things like half-day schedules since September. We have a local district that's been doing that at the elementary level in a particular grade. We have a nearby district that just is opening up kindergarten, back to school, and so on. The issue for us, and it's different from school district to school district, that people don't want to listen to is, and we heard it tonight. Seventy-five percent of students in one class said they don't want to come back. So there's one opinion. I've got the same opinion going on internally and externally. We put together a detailed plan internally with dates, and I won't say what dates they are, because it nullifies the working document that I have, that is aggressive, that looks to have us do things that are as good, if not better, than anyone around us, to be quite honest. But it takes time to get there, and I'll, and I'll give you some, some reasons that I think are very difficult for people to understand. I'm going to stand by my staff for two reasons. Number one, because I already have opting people out on FMLA because of medical conditions, and I don't want to create yet another list of people that are concerned about their health, because there are going to be more bodies in the classroom. I have a big concern about that. I know that there are a lot of people who don't care about that, that discussion. I do. The second part that I think is important is I don't want to close after we open. And I am cautious about it, because I do have concerns. We currently, we currently have increased numbers at Norton High School for positive cases of COVID. It is not significant, but as you grow one, and then one more, and then two, and then one more, and then you're at nine, and then you're at 10, you start to worry about what's going on. And of course, we're coming right after February vacation. I believe that the commissioner is going to specify at the board meeting sometime in mid-March. Too late for me. Too late for me to wait, to hear about that. I think that working with the Norton Teachers Association and our other unions, and you folks as a school committee, we will be releasing specific detailed information in the very near future that outlines a staggered return to school, and in my opinion, goes beyond what you're going to hear from others. I don't know if that helped.
Joe, can I just ask one question? When we, when we hear the commissioner talk about his plans and so on and so forth, I won't get into whether or not I agree with him or not, but what is the rationale behind bringing elementary first versus high school first? Because, because to me, again, my opinion is with the high school-age students, maybe they have a fairer understanding of what's going on with masks and things like that versus maybe the elementary school kids are, you know, the mask comes down, they want to talk to their friends, and it's maybe more of a, or at least lesser controlled environment at the elementary level versus high school level. So is that something that you have any insight on, or is it just his preference?
What the numbers at the state level show us, just numbers and data, is that within that, you know, older group of students, it's a higher rate than with the younger kids. That's number one. And that's the biggest, that's the biggest concern. I'll give you a perfect example. We have a beautiful high school, right? I have classrooms that are not going to be, if we opened up tomorrow, won't be at three feet. They won't even be at three feet, because their classes with 28 kids in them. So, you know, those are, those are areas that, that worry people, including students. There's just a comment, somebody's asking for a specific date. I'm going to say it again. I am not telling you tonight a specific date, because I'm not ready to. So if you want to say it's April vacation, go ahead and say it. You want to say it's next week, go ahead and say it. You want to sign a petition that says you need something by March 5th, go ahead. I do not act on petitions. Never have, never will. So the fact is, it's about the safety of students. I'm going to continue to prioritize that. We are working to come back. We want to come back. We want to hear why 21 other states still have not, have vaccinated educators. This state still doesn't have a plan for that. We've all asked, through you, I've asked, CDC, Board of Massachusetts Department of Public Health, two different letters to our state legislators, why aren't these vaccines coming directly to the town of Norton and given directly to its educators like the potential that was given to law enforcement and fire departments and nurses and everybody else? Right on site. They didn't have to go anywhere. That's what should be happening, because that's the easiest way. Here's what's going to happen when they do release vaccines. How am I going to control when staff gets their vaccines? I can't. It's a medical, it's a medical decision that you can take a sick day for and go get, go in line and go, and go get your vaccine. We could potentially close schools because of that. You don't think that as superintendents, we've been having those discussions? When we have 25 teachers out on the same day, all getting their vaccines? Of course. Versus if we were, we were doing it in our schools, like they did in the hospitals, like they did with, with public safety, we could have it done literally in, in a few hours. And nobody wants to listen to that. And now what we're, what we're hearing at the state level is, is that they're not getting enough vaccines. So yes, the frustration level with me is through the roof when it comes to this issue, because I am waiting for other folks to be able to take care of that vaccination. Although there are some people that are, that could get the vaccination and have chosen not to do so. And we can get specifics into those as well, if we'd like to. And my view of it is that students, right now, are, we are planning to have them back in school sooner than later. We are looking to make sure that we're doing it in a way that's safe for all parties. And we're also making sure that when we do put the plan in place, that I don't end up with another list of 15 more staff that are going to go under FMLA, and I'm not going to be able to put a physical person in front of students. We cannot find subs right now. We can't find the subs that we want right now. So all of that goes into play as well. It will be staggered. And in the, in the following opportunities that we have, we will release those and provide a specific date. It will be a very quick turnaround time. So if you're going on vacation, you might hear about it while you're on vacation. It is not going to be weeks ahead of time announcement. You won't hear it three weeks ahead of time. That's when we're starting. It's going to be potentially days from, from starting, as it pertains to parents versus internally, simply because we're trying to figure out. The other thing is, we've had a discussion about trying to get students back in a way that would be half-days. I just don't think that that's an opportunity for Norton at all, doing it with the half-days and trying to get parents to figure out how to take care of students on a half-day release. So as soon as the agreements are done and tied, tied up, we will move them forward.
If I can just add, Joe, just to sort of comment, I think that what we know and what has been sort of said publicly on social media, I think is that we're not doing enough. We're not putting the kids' interests at heart. We're not really worried about getting kids back to school. You know, we all have our opinions. We certainly know that we, that is not true. That we have had multiple conversations and meetings and just really working on a plan to get kids back to school. I do want to add, and something you said, Joe, and I want to sort of make it very clear, is that there is a real big issue with finding substitutes. So it's easy to say, just get back to school. If you, I think we just need to be very clear. If Norton goes back to school and put in teachers with the support of their medical physician, decide to do an FMLA, I think we will be hearing the same exact concerns about who's in front of my child. That this substitute, this long-term sub, this person isn't meeting my expectations, isn't sort of teaching my, my child. So we absolutely don't want to do something that's going to then impact a group of students in a classroom without a teacher. So I, I think that, I just hope that everybody can see that this is absolutely a really difficult time. It's a difficult situation. There's always a flip side. There's always something that we are absolutely required to think about, that we're taking the time to think about. This isn't just about putting, so it's just not about putting kids back in school. It's really about making decisions that will have the, the best kind of outcomes in the end. So it's about where we're going to put children for lunch, how we're going to get children to school on the bus, you know, sort of how are we going to maintain social distancing? I mean, it's just not as simple as just bring the kids back to school. So everybody has a right to their opinion. I know that there's comments coming through the chat box. I know somebody just told me, just do the right thing. You can disagree with me all you want. I think from the very start, we have absolutely made every attempt to do the right thing for our students, for our staff. We know it hasn't been the right thing for every individual family. But, you know, we are not looking at just one family. We are looking at a whole entire district. So.
I, I think it's really important, too, that, that, you know, ideas are really good. Send them forward. But just as a response to one of the things, we've made communication with 12 universities and colleges about direct, I mean, I'm looking at Vinnie Cersei right now about counselors and coming to work for us and finding ways to give them their internships. We've called, we've had our own students, former students from Norton, that have, when they were home, were working for us two days a week, three days a week. We had a student who was a sophomore in college who ran our Spanish class at the high school for weeks. Many of you are shaking your head. You know what I'm talking about. We, we are not just sitting in the throne, looking around. We are trying. It is frustrating, I understand. But if the idea is just open the doors, that's, that's truly irresponsible.
Joe, I also just want to comment too, because I am more on social media and try to comment to diffuse instead of, you know, get people riled up, which I'm trying not to with some of the comments that have come in. I think it's important to, to point out that this is not a school depart, or admin against our Norton Teachers Union. This is not, teachers want to be back in the classroom, and anybody thinks that they're trying to just get another day off is foolish. And it's getting annoying to keep hearing that. This is not our Teachers Union fighting back with us. It's, it's us. We have always led, and our Teachers Union working with our admin team to get done what needs to happen for the, for the health and safety of our students and staff. So I just want to make sure people realize, it, this is not a time to go after our Teachers Union and think it's them, or think that it's our teachers not wanting to be back in the classroom. That is 100% false information, and it needs to stop. I asked today on Facebook to please have a little bit of patience, a little bit of trust, which I know it is very difficult to trust leaders right now because of things going around, around us, but have a little bit of faith, have a little bit of trust in our leaders that we are working hard to make this happen safely for students and staff. And again, I will remind people, as I did this summer, to please have a little bit of kindness. We are a group of people who sit here time and time again, when some of us may actually not be feeling well ourselves, taking time away from our own health to sit here and help our students get back safely. Please be kind. Stop. We understand how difficult this is for you. We truly do. I am begging you to please stop with some of these comments and be kind to everybody around you. Thank you.
I think, if I can just sort of piggyback on that, we are, I think Dinesh and I probably can, can speak to this maybe more than others, because we are on the negotiation team. But I think that clearly, we have a, a union leader who is thoughtful and conscientious and really also looking at how we can work together collaboratively as a team. And I think that the administration team, you know, there, there is a group that meets weekly that really has been talking about this. It's, it's a collaborative process. It's making sure that everybody is doing what is in the best interest of, of our district, of our schools, of our teachers, of our students. So, and, and it's absolutely fine that people want to disagree with me personally or with us as a group, but there is really not much more we can say, except that the conversations have happened regularly and consistently and that we absolutely know that we have had conversations about putting a plan in place. Just because families don't know it doesn't mean that it is not happening. And it is absolutely imperative that these conversations happen. And Dr. Baeta, I'll turn it over to you, because I know that you might have something you want to comment.
I, I just, for the sake of agreeing to disagreeing with some, which I actually do appreciate debate, as long as it's civil. We would like to announce tonight that, and this was part of my original conversation before I went on my own tangent, we will be sending out a parent survey, because we do have parents who have their students only at home. We have students in hybrid, and we are sending out a survey to all parents tomorrow. That survey will be open from Friday until Mon, would say Monday, Tuesday, excuse me, Tuesday midday. That survey has very specific questions. It is to give us a gist, if you will, of where parents stand on returning to school, so that we can have, if you will, better concrete numbers, or at least general numbers. Because when you have 2,400 students, and you have currently 300 and plus students in DLA, we have to plan for some of that. That is not the first part of this process. That's actually one of the, about step 10 of 15. That will go out tomorrow from Jen O'Neill's office and our communications department. We hope that you partake in putting in it. It's not going to be one of those surveys that has a lot of open response. It's very kind of like quantitative, trying to collect the data to see if it gives us any, any hope of what some of these numbers will look like. I also think it's really important in general for us to remember that we have been educating our neediest of students in full-day programs for months. And to be quite honest, we were one of the first ones in the area, and we were copied in many instances from the way that we were doing it. And I'm really proud of that, because I think long-term, that will have a very positive effect for Norton Public Schools. This is dare, this is very dare to me. I think you all know why. It's not just professional, it's personal. If there's anyone who thinks I don't want to have my freshmen in Norton High School every day right now, you're nuts. That's what I want, absolutely. But I also know the day-to-day operations of what's happening within COVID, and I think it's important to do this in the safest way possible, and I'll leave with that.
So, um.
The other discussion is the resolution.
Right, I, I guess I don't, I, I don't really know what else to say. So we're just going to move on. You know, I, I think that we can all agree to disagree, but I, I just need to make sure everybody knows that we are working on this, that this is absolutely something that we have been really focused on. I think the, the next item that, the other business, so the other sort of emails that we've been receiving, or I know that I have been receiving, are questions about MCAS. If anybody knows anything about us as a school committee, or at least a few of us on the school committee, you know that we always sort of question MCAS, right, Jen? We're always sort of your biggest cheerleader when it comes to MCAS. So in light of the current sort of coronavirus situation, the Norton School Committee drafted a resolution in regards to MCAS. Each one of you received, I think, a copy of it, but we're just going to discuss it tonight. We will not take a vote on it tonight. We can consider a vote on it during our next meeting, but I'll just sort of enter into public record the first statement. That's the first paragraph that says, "In light of the coronavirus COVID-19 and the impact of our schools and students in Norton, the Norton School Committee believes it is critical that Massachusetts officials seek and obtain a testing waiver from the U.S. Department of Education and cancel this." a testing waiver from the U.S. Department of Education and cancel this year's MCAS test." So for anybody who has sent me an email, thank you. Um I think that we are all in agreement that um we can all say that we use, um we've been hearing a lot that mental health, our children's mental health, their emotional wellness um has really been impacted by COVID. And then we look at um Desi, we look at the governor of Massachusetts, bringing kids back to school for what? To be tested, to be sitting in front of a computer, to have a standardized test. I'm not sure that that is really beneficial to anybody's sort of mental health. So um it's just for a discussion, um each one of you on the committee, if you wanted to read and review and we can talk about it more next week. Um I think that potentially we might want to make a a a public motion of a vote um to either accept or decline this resolution. But um it is my opinion and I will go on record that I'm not sure that MCAS is really the appropriate um way for children to re-enter um the school um after being kind of um overwhelmed by COVID and overwhelmed by sort of the the learning um that has been taking place so far. So Dr. Beata, I'm not sure if you have anything to add. I know you and I had had a separate conversation. Um what happens if Norton just opts out? Um is that an option? So I don't know if you wanted to sort of address that. Um I know what the answer is, but maybe you can publicly address it.
It's, it's, the district does not have a right to opt out under the law. The district must, however, um you know, we'll, we'll provide uh information at the next meeting. Um you know, uh there's two concerns here, right? The the first concern is that students come back, we're all into SEL, we want them to get to know each other more as a, as a cohort, as one cohort, not two and all of that, and we're gonna be required to put them into testing situations. And I think that's gonna frustrate uh our, our youngest children specifically. Our, our older students, um you know, my own child, tenth graders, it's a graduation requirement. Maybe I look at that a little differently because it is a graduation requirement. Um but I I'm having a really difficult time after thirty years in this business and the last twelve as a superintendent uh believing that this MCAS is a quote diagnostic. Um I don't know what it's diagnosing um in in terms of being a summit of assessment um and and what the point is. And my concern is that that it is not in the, in the best interest of students. Uh I'm all for um accountability. I'm all for high standards. Uh but I think that takes multiple assessments and um you'll hear from me next week uh that my association um as coming out with a very specific detailed rationale um and also options um that the Commonwealth should consider. Um the Biden administration uh unfortunately did just announce that they are not going to accept waivers um from states, but that they are gonna give flexibility to states. Um and as a school committee and as an association for myself as a superintendent and um um parent groups and all of that, I think we want to give the commissioner, the secretary of education and the governor some good rational changes um instead of spending thirty-five million dollars on a test that we all know this year in particular is a struggle to accept as being anything close to diagnostic.
I hear ya.
We'll put it on the table for next week.
Yeah, that would be great. So um if anybody.
Can I just throw in my comments?
For sure.
Um for pretty much all of you, I'm I'm sure, go on the school committee administration, not gonna be shocked by my comments here. And MCAS is an absolute horrific waste of our time in the best of years, let alone this year. Um I I will fully support any time we want to opt out of or or decline to or skip or whatever MCAS. The the sooner we get rid of this this standardized testing, the better. I I can't stand it. It's a complete waste of our time.
And I completely agree. I I've said this, you and I have both said this at at almost every school committee meeting where MCAS is discussed. On a good year, it's it's a waste of our time. I'll tell you and everybody else that's listening what I'm telling my children this year, if they have to take it, don't care. Go in, fill out any answer you want. I do not care. I do not care what happens. I do not, I I don't want this added pressure on our students and on our staff. It is asinine that this is not being taken off the table. So for my kids, go fail it. Don't care.
I I don't think anybody disagrees, Sherri. I mean, I think that we've had this conversation and poor Jen when she has to present um the MCAS results, right? Because she knows that we're all just going to listen politely and then sort of say, okay, let's move on. Um so I know that it has some benefits. Jen will sort of remind us that it's sort of a little bit of a a tracking system and it kind of helps us kind of get at least some, some ideas. I understand all of that. I just am not exactly sure, especially during COVID, that it is um necessary or appropriate. So that resolution is on the table. We will um be able to talk about it next week if you want to or or we'll go straight into the vote. Um we just didn't have it in time to actually um vote on it tonight, so just have it ready for next week. Um so I think that it, are there any other comments, any other questions? I'm not seeing anything new come into the chat or no questions from um anybody that needs to be answered. Just want to make sure everybody um who's in attendance has sort of asked their questions.
Carolyn, I do just want to say, my my phone has blown up through Facebook, through the chats here, through text. I am fine. Uh you know, thank you, people. I I just, I get highly emotional um when I feel attacked sometimes or I feel like our group is being attacked, our teachers, our admin, us. Um but I am fine. I I will take a deep breath and probably have a drink tonight. Um but thank you so much to everybody who is is actually showing kindness. It is very much appreciated from so many people. So thank you and please continue with that.
Agreed. Um so I have given it a couple of minutes. I don't see any additional comments or questions. I think that we are um set to adjourn. Do you agree, Dr. Beata? No other comments?
No other comments.
Perfect. So um thanks, everyone. I know we had a little bit of a difficult conversation. It's been a difficult few days. We are doing um really what we think is best and having um really, I think, very successful conversations. So um we will be back in touch soon. We do have a meeting again next week, so join us if you so choose. Um so is there a motion to adjourn the school committee meeting for Thursday, February twenty-sixth? Second? All in favor? Dan?
Yes.
Sherri?
Yes.
Um Dinesh?
Sure, why not?
And I am a yes. I think um Kathleen has dropped off, so.
That's an implied yes.
Perfect. Okay, thanks, everyone. Have a good night.
Have a great night.
Take care.
Bye.